Good evening, welcome to our 2018 Election Forum Series here on WEFS and at FloridaToday.com. I'm Isadora Rangel, your host for the evening and Florida Today's engagement editor. Tonight onstage, we're going to meet the candidates running for County Commission District Two, covering Merritt Island, Cocoa Beach, Cape Canaveral, and parts of Cocoa and Rockledge. District Two has two primaries on the August 28th ballot. The first one in the GOP will feature former Commissioner Chuck Nelson and Brian Lober, a lawyer. On the Democratic side, we have Victoria Mitchner and Jack Smink. A reminder of the rules for tonight, each candidate will have one minute to answer our question, as well as one minute for their opening and closing statements. They also get a 30-second rebuttal if one of their opponents brings them up. And this forum series is a partnership between Florida Today, Eastern Florida State College, and the League of Women Voters of the Space Coast. They're partnering with us at Florida Today to make this a reality. So let's begin with our opening statements. The first one to go is Victoria Mitchner, a Democrat. Victoria, you have one minute.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Victoria Mitchner. I am a native here of Brevard County. I was born in Rockledge, raised out in Sharps or Canaveral Grove, which is right up the road. If you blink your eye, you'll miss it. I am the oldest of three children. My mother is a janitor. My father is a construction worker. I am also a U.S. Army Combat Veteran, serving our country honorably for almost 15 years. And basically, I am running to represent the underrepresented here in Brevard County. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack?
Yes, I'm Jack Smink. I'm third-generation Brevardian. I've lived here. I moved here when I was eight years old. My grandfather lived over on Parnell Street in Merritt Island. So I got to really experience some of the beautiful time in Brevard County, when you could go out and catch a bounty of fish, or crab, or shrimp, and the waters were clear. And it was a lovely time to grow up. I married my high school sweetheart. We've been married, Karen and I, she's a schoolteacher here in Brevard County. And we've been married 39 years. I know it's hard to believe, but we've been married 39 years. And I have two adult children, Crystal and John. And the reason I'm running is I love Brevard County, I want to make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian?
Thank you. Unlike my opponent, who's received more money from Democrats, lobbyists, and PACs than everyone on this stage combined, I'm self-funding my campaign. In contrast, unless my opponent's filed a new financial report today, every single contribution that he's received in the last reporting period was from the opposite party. And unlike my opponent, who's been living on a taxpayer dime for years, I'm neither a career politician nor a bureaucrat, this is my first and only political race. Unlike my opponent, who's promised some of the same things he's promising now 12 years ago and eight years ago, but failed to deliver, I keep my promises. I don't offer excuses. Unlike my opponent, who is receiving the lowest-ever rating given to any candidate by the county Republican Party, I'm a real Republican. And unlike my opponent, I'm a business owner, and I understand the needs of businesses, as that's how I make my living. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Also known on the GOP side, Chuck Nelson, you go next.
I'm Chuck Nelson. I am a 28-year resident of Brevard County. I have been a Republican for 50 years this September. And unlike my opponent, I didn't have to wait 14 years to figure out I was a Republican. I live on Merritt Island with my wife, Gail. We've been married 41 years. And our son, Morgan, lives in Port St. John. I was honored to serve Brevard County as a Commissioner for eight years, through some of the most difficult economic times that I hope we ever see in our lifetime. And during that period of time, we were able to accomplish a great deal. But we're at a crossroads still, and as we move forward, we need to have leadership, and we need to have experience to move forward. I have not run a nasty campaign like my opponent, and will not run a nasty campaign like my opponent, so there's a huge difference between the two of us.
Thank you. No, we don't, only in the question period, thank you. So let's get to business here. We'll start. The first question is, what is the first thing you will push if you are elected to the County Commission? The first one to go is Jack.
Yeah, the first thing I'm going to do is, the first thing on my agenda is to, now, the first thing I did when I filed to run was I went and met with every department head at the county level. I went over budgeting issues, I went over issues, and I went over how they get their funding. And I began to develop a relationship with the department's heads at the county level. I feel like that's going to be my first thing on my agenda, is to go back, revisit these people, and get to develop further the relationships, so that when I need resources to make decisions, because a county commissioner doesn't know everything, ladies and gentlemen, against everybody's opinion, they don't know everything. But I want to be able to go to these people and get the answers. And so that's my first and foremost first thing to do when I'm County Commissioner.
Brian, you're next.
Sure. The first motion that I intend to make, and it may have to be phrased interestingly to get around some issues with the county charter, but the crux of it is I want to move to lower every Commissioner's salary, including my own, by $10,000. And the reason that I want to do that is because at $58,000 and change, the individual salary for each of the County Commissioners exceeds the household median income in this county by almost exactly $10,000. Given the freeness with which the Commission as a whole has been spending our hard-earned tax dollars, I don't think it's appropriate that they earn that much over the median household income. If you look at the individual income, the average individual income, it's even strikingly lower than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Chuck?
My first challenge would be to deal with the issues instead of with salaries. The biggest issue we've got in front of us is the lagoon. And I believe that the plan in place is a good plan. The problem is, is that we are not moving at a rate that I think is going to get it done in a timely fashion. I would characterize it as that we're at war. We are trying to win the battle, to save the lagoon, but we don't have a general in place that has the experience to move it forward. We have some great staff, but there are not enough of them to get these projects done. So I really believe that the County Commission needs to have a discussion about how to accelerate it, and to begin to work on the edges about how we're going to replace septic systems, how we're going to improve sewer systems. So the lagoon would be my number-one priority.
Can I rebut as well? Something I'd mention to reference?
Sure, you have 30 seconds.
Sure, just briefly. There's nothing that's mutually exclusive in moving to have the Commissioner's salary reduced, then also addressing the lagoon. As far as the lagoon being a good plan, it's worse, not better, than it ever has been. Thank you.
Victoria, you're next.
So one of the first things that I would do is meet with the department directors to see what the needs are within the departments. I am a previous county employee, and I was working a particular job as a personnel officer, but was also tasked many other jobs. And so in order to continue to have the county running smoothly, we need to make sure that we figure out what's needed from those employees to keep the county continuously running in a smooth operation.
Thank you. And speaking of needs, Brevard County has hundreds of millions of dollars in road improvement backlog. Are you in favor of an increase in gas taxes or a special infrastructure sales tax to fund road repairs? If not, how would you pay for road improvements? And Brian, you're going first.
Sure. No, simple, no. I'm not in favor of increasing taxes in order to fund that. We have a budget that's approximately $1.2 billion in this county. If we cut the expenditures that are unnecessary, we'll have ample funds to address the roads. I would add to that, given the remaining time that I have, that we need to look at the average life expectancy of a road, rather than worrying about these issues in four-year election cycles, and determine what has to be repaired, what has to be replaced, and time things according to the life cycle of the road, not according to a political life cycle.
Thank you. Chuck?
Okay. When you look at the road issue, the Blue Ribbon Committee came up with a list of roads, $600 million worth of roads that needed improvement. One of the challenges is going to be that County Commission District Two would only get 5% of that benefit, yet be expected to pay 20% of the cost. And I think we really have to have a discussion about the road list itself, and what is equitable in that. And then you have a discussion about funding. I don't believe we need gas tax at this time. I just think we need to make a equitable funding of the dollars that are available. So I will not be bringing up a gas tax.
Victoria, you're next.
No, I would not be voting to raise taxes. I would continue to follow the current plan laid out by the Public Works Department to resurface the roadways instead of letting them go unmaintained. It costs less money to the taxpayers to do road resurfacing than to actually have to rebuild another road, so that's my stance on that.
Jack?
Yeah, your county staff and your county manager work on the recommendation of the County Commission. And the County Commission are five people that are elected, and there's a cost involved in that election. So if special interest groups are funding those particular people that are running, it puts undue pressure on them to accommodate them down the road. So what that does is that causes an inequitable balance of priorities. In other words, they don't do the first thing, the most important thing, like roads and infrastructure first. They go to the tourism, and they want to put in grass in a ball field. And so I feel that their priorities need to be readjusted, but the County Commissions do. The county is doing a jam-up job. The employees and the staff are doing a fabulous job of balancing what they can.
Thank you. The next question is actually from a reader. Over the last decade, storm water and flood levels on North Merritt Island have been rising higher each year, flooding more roads and houses of long-term residents. That's caused in part by building on previously open lands that held water during storms. If elected, will you limit new building in flood-prone areas? And if not, how will you address this issue? And Chuck, you're going first.
Okay. I think the issuance of a moratorium for septic systems is going to be beneficial. The County Commission has just approved doing a drainage study to determine what some of the issues are on flooding. It's clear that we've had a change in the ecology of North Merritt Island. During the Hurricane Irma, I happened to live on the water. My dock was underwater for an extended period of time, which means that water can't get off of North Merritt Island. So I really believe that we need to understand what the issues are, and we're going to bump into the issue of property rights, because people have a right to develop property, but we need to make sure that it doesn't cause damage to the other properties. Property rights extend to both sides of the property line.
Would you agree to limiting building in that area?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Victoria, you're next.
So I would also agree to limit building in those areas. We also need to make sure that the public is aware of all of the places that are at risk within the county that are vulnerable to flooding, and so that's basically my stance on that.
Thank you. Jack?
North Merritt Island's under attack, their environment is. The wetlands are under attack, and the people that are attacking the property and the people that are already there is the special interest groups, the developers, the people that get some, the people that they pick elected. Once they get elected, they cash in their chips, and they get approval of zoning changes. They go from agricultural to residential. Now Merritt Island's at an impasse right now, and it's flooding terribly. They call it the bowl. Merritt Island is basically a bowl. The only way they keep water from totally flooding everyone is to put three pumps strategically in Merritt Island and pump the water in a circle till it finally perks down into the ground. So common sense tells you, put more homes in, more slabs, and approving parking lots for the port is not a good idea for North Merritt Island. North Merritt Island needs a break, man.
Thank you, Chuck.
And I would, that would be an issue that I would go for.
Move on to Brian now.
Thank you. I'm going to dovetail off that in terms of the soil permeability being an issue. Anytime you put slabs, anytime you put concrete, asphalt, brick, and you block water from being able to seep into the ground, you end up with a potential for problems. I'm going to digress from everyone on this table, though, with respect to my answer with development. I think that we shouldn't have a blanket prohibition. However, if there is a plan that's proposed, the onus ought to be on the individual or individuals proposing that plan to explain clearly to the Commission how it is they're accounting for the water, so that it doesn't compound the problem and make the problem worse that's already existing up there with standing water and with floods that they frequently have. Unfortunately, this has been dealt with as a political question more than a scientific question, but I really believe that if the onus is put on those proposing the plans to address that, with the knowledge being that if they don't address that, the plans won't be approved, we'll be in a position where we're still fostering new folks moving into the community without having to harm the local residents that are already there.
Thank you. And it's still on the topic of growth. Next question is, Brevard County is enjoying significant population growth, which brings costs and the need for new infrastructure such as roads, water, and sewer plants. Do you believe we should continue to encourage growth in the county? If so, how do we make it sustainable? Victoria, you go first.
So I am fine with growth in the county as long as it is smart growth. There's nothing wrong with people coming here to Brevard County and embracing the culture that we have. However, we're going to need some trade programs here to help sustain a better way of life here in Brevard County.
Jack, you're next.
The word I like to use is sustainable. Sustainable growth, not against growth, but I think that every decision, not just when it comes to our environment, when it comes to our culture, when it comes to what's important in Brevard County, has to be dealt with through the lens of sustainability. In other words, when you look at your children, your grandchildren, your grandchildren, you want to be able to have them look back and say, you know what, my great-grandpa did a pretty good job on making decisions. He made sustainable decisions. And the only way to do that is to be able to make, to be a free man, make your own decision, and not be, and not have pressure applied by special interest groups. I'm going to go back to special interest groups. I can't help it.
And Brian, should the county continue to encourage growth? You're next.
Yes, I am going to say I agree with the concept of smart growth. I don't know that we necessarily agree on what that means. I tend to live by the golden rule, and I encourage that, that folks think the same way with respect to this question, in that do unto others as you want done unto you is sort of a good idiom or good axiom here. You want to look at the impact that the proposed building has on neighbors. By and large, if everything's going well, you should be free to do largely as you please with your own property. However, when you're interfering with your neighbor's property rights and your neighbor's ability to enjoy their property properly, that's an issue. I do have a concern with that. So I am in favor of growth, but I am in favor of having reasonable restrictions that prevent growth from interfering with neighbors' property.
Thank you. Chuck?
You know, smart growth is about trying to put your residential and your commercial in areas where the infrastructure already exists. It's not about going out and creating something new, and you leave something behind that is there just to decline. So I think that we need to focus on sustainability through encouraging and coming up with programs that would encourage redevelopment of our existing areas, as opposed to going out into undeveloped areas and growing from the inside out. Because in the end, we end up leaving behind properties that fall into disrepair and actually hurt property values. So I'm in favor of smart growth. I think it needs to be sustainable. We need to have a program in place that encourages that.
Thank you. Now, onto the lagoon. What is your plan to reduce the number of septic tanks along the lagoon and expedite their conversion to sewer lines? Jack, you go first.
Well, you've got to start with, you've got to start with the homes that have septic tanks the closest to the lagoon itself, because those have the biggest impact, and then work your way out. I would love to see us get on city sewer, city water eventually, and work toward that end. That's going to be difficult, because you're talking about a very expensive endeavor. But for right now, I would start closest to the lagoon and work our way out from there.
Brian, your plan to reduce septic tanks along the lagoon?
I think the big question, the bigger question is, is the alternative better? And right now, I'm not going to argue that septic tanks aren't causing problems with the lagoon, that they're not contributing to the overall issue. However, when we have frequent breakages of lines, where we're having 870,000 gallons that we know of, of raw sewage going right into the lagoon, to put people on a system that's failing at this point doesn't seem to really solve the problem. It may make people feel good in the interim between switching from septic to sewer and sewer breaking, but the problem is, we have a major infrastructure issue, not just with roads, but with the sewers of the storm drains, where they're not being leak-tested and they're not being observed and reviewed as they ought to be. They have a finite lifespan, they need to pressure-test them, they need to corrosion-test them where they're visible to the naked eye, and they need to fix that. And then after that's done, we can look at switching people from septic over to sewer, once sewer is reliable once more.
Chuck?
You know, sewer systems are ratepayer-based. They're not tax-supported. So I think you have to keep in mind that as we talk about making all those improvements, what our rates are going to be, and that's always going to be the challenge. There's going to need to be a partnership between the lagoon program and the half-cent sales tax with the jurisdictions, which are, and there are several different jurisdictions that do sewer, it's not only just the county, to do this. The county moved forward with $130-plus million of improvements. The problem is, it does take time to make those improvements. And you may not be aware of it, but the county bought those systems from the private sector. So in some cases, they're not even fully sure of what's in the ground. They're having to deal with it on a case-by-case basis, but we've got to do better. There's no question about it. The latest break happened in an area where it was closed off, or at least they thought it was. And so I'm not sure how they would have anticipated that 30 years down the road that that was going to happen.
Victoria, you're next.
So I would convert more homes from septic to sewer, and also find a non-invasive way so that we're not invading other people's privacy, or going into people's pockets and making them pay for something that they can't afford. Because if we do the conversion from septic to sewer, that's going to cost, that's going to have to come from somewhere. So I would say we would go into some agreements with some local municipalities, and just work across the aisle, and see if we can reach out to the state and even the federal level for funding.
Thank you. As you're probably well aware, there is a proposed constitutional amendment on the November ballot, asking voters to approve expanding the homestead exemption at a cost of up to $12 million in tax revenue annually for Brevard County. Do you think voters should approve that amendment? And if so, how should the county make up for the lost revenue? Brian, you go first.
Sure. And I've heard different numbers. I hear, as you said, up to 12 million. Let's go with that, just for the sake of argument. You've got to keep in mind that the actual budget of the county is $1.17 billion. We can cut fat and cut excessive spending such that that won't give us problems. In terms of whether individuals should vote for that, it's not my place to tell folks whether they should vote for a particular amendment or not. I think that the reality of the situation is, it's almost certain to pass. I'm not a betting man, but if I were, I would say that's going to pass. $12 million out of the budget that we have, even when you take away the items that we really can't touch in that budget, we still have ample funds available if we spend more wisely.
Chuck?
I think that's over simplistic to the extent that the $12 million of lost revenue is made up of different pockets of money. For instance, our road deputies are funded specifically out of a tax, and that's a million-dollar cut. And there is no way to back-fund that. And you're not going to find a million dollars of road deputy fat. So I think there are going to be some challenges for the county. I'm always disappointed with the legislature creating these things without actually determining what those impacts are to the local communities. And I would hope that at some point, the legislature actually creates a impact component to these, or different statutes that they create. But whether or not, you know, the citizens are going to approve it, I think they probably will. I don't know that I've ever seen a tax cut that didn't pass, and the problem is, we don't tie it to what the reality of the cut's going to be.
Isadora, can I respond briefly?
I'm sorry, that, he did not bring you up, but I will ask you, how should the county make up for the lost revenue? Chuck?
Well, I think it's going to be a combination of some effort to reduce budgets and determine what our needs are, and, you know, there may have to be, you know, in the case of the road deputies, there may need, to be the need to actually increase that millage, but offset it somewhere else.
Thank you.
Isadora, just briefly?
Victoria, I'm sorry, rebuttal only if he brings you up.
It was brought up. I was told that my plan was overly, or my analysis was overly simplistic.
Sure, go ahead.
I appreciate it. No, I just want to get clarification here, that what was said was a mischaracterization of what I had earlier said. I've never proposed a million-dollar cut to road deputies or anything of that nature, so I'm not sure where that came from. I think that's just a straw-man argument that was put up to be easy to knock down.
Victoria, you're next.
So I would never tell anyone how to vote. I would tell people to vote your conscience and what works best for you and your finances. I do believe that homestead exemption would pass in November, and I think residents need to think what impacts it will cost to the county. The $12 million is a huge hit to the budget, and so I'm not sure what services would be cut if that did pass, but some of the things that I did look at, if that did pass, is service contracts, various services that people are used to may be gone. So I think that voters should take time and consideration of the impacts that, you know, will be there.
Jack, you're next.
Here's the truth of this, the fact. Yes, $7 to $12 million, a million-dollar loss to our revenue for us to be able to put in more infrastructure, or whatever needs we have. But more important than that, who benefits from this? The way it's structured, it's a $100,000 home or more. So that means, if you don't have a $100,000 home, and there's a lot more people than probably people realize that don't have a $100,000 home, they benefit nothing from this, nothing. Okay? So, and I think that equates out to almost 50% of our citizens out there do not benefit from this tax, this homestead exemption. So we need to think of what we're getting for that. It's probably going to pass, because all that people are hearing is homestead exemption, but it doesn't apply to everybody.
Thank you.
Middle and low class doesn't get it.
Your time is up. Thank you. And since we're talking about cutting costs and finding savings, should the county reduce library, park hours, or services to save money, whether this measure passes or not in November? Chuck, you go first.
Well, I was on a commission that was required to do that, and we did. We reduced the county's budgets by 500 million, or 500 positions, and about $80 million. And the difficulty was, most of those positions were in parks and in libraries. And I think they have been cut to the extent that they can be cut. You can tighten up some, but you're not going to find significant dollars in those areas to cut. And our citizens have shown that they appreciate both their parks and libraries. They have supported numerous referendums, they have built parks after having told the County Commission, this is what we want to do, and pass those referendums. So I think it's going to be difficult. I'm not in favor of closing parks and libraries, and I certainly don't want to see their hours reduced more than they currently are.
Victoria?
So I am not in favor of reducing library or parks' hours. The taxpayers do pay taxes to utilize those facilities. Library services was actually one of the departments that I advise for administrative matters when I worked for the county, and a lot of those workers are part-time employees, and they have to work two and three jobs. So I think that we also have to take into consideration those hard-working county employees as well. Most of them work 20 hours per week, like I said, and they work a second job, so I just, I couldn't agree with that one.
Jack, should the county cut library hours and services?
I served on Parks and Rec, South Parks and Rec's board, and I can tell you, what they do for our community is invaluable. And if you don't invest in our children and keep them off the streets, it's going to cost us more in taking them off the streets. So Parks and Rec's is a no-brainer. Libraries, let me tell you, I've spent a lot of time at the library, because that's where I went and got a lot of my Palm Cards signed. And I got to meet people and find out why they were at the library. A lot of these people are getting an education at that library. It's their only availability to a computer. It's their only availability to information that they need, and it's well-utilized. So I'm not for cutting budget on the libraries either.
Thank you. Brian?
I'm opposed to cutting libraries with respect to parks. I think there's an alternative that ought to be considered as well. There are some municipalities that have county parks in and around them. parks in and around them, where the municipalities are interested in taking over those parks and continuing to use them as parks, so that they'll exercise local control and essentially take what is a liability and a continuing expense off the hands of the county and maintain it for the residents in a way that we would expect. The parks clearly, at this point, are not in a great state of repair. I've been to several of them recently. We have docks and walkways that are blocked off or that are barred off with pieces of 2x4 or 2x6 that say "keep out" or broken. So I think we need to explore creative solutions, not just look at cutting or not cutting. I think potentially selling them to the municipalities is a beneficial way of resolving the issue altogether.
Thank you. So let's move on to economic development. What is your view of the Economic Development Commission of the Space Coast, whose job is, among many things, attracting businesses to relocate to Brevard, and agencies such as the North Brevard Economic Development Zone? Should they continue to exist? Why or why not? Victoria, you go first.
So I think the EDC does a wonderful job at what they already accomplished here in Brevard County and bringing a lot of jobs here to the Space Coast. One of the projects, the Walmart Distribution Center here in Cocoa, brought 400 jobs to this area. And I think that I would love to see them also partner and bring in more trade programs and partner with Eastern Florida or some other schools in getting trade programs. So I just couldn't foresee doing away with the EDC and what they do because they've done a tremendous job.
Jack?
I would agree with Ms. Michener that they do a great job. The thing of it is, though, I would like to see a little more oversight, but that goes for everything. But they, the job they do, people don't realize the responsibility they have in this community. They don't just work on bringing in large embryair companies. They're working on small business and helping the community with our small business. They, they're, and they have to work in a very competitive environment. Every city, every state, every county, everybody's out to be competitive to bring in the big companies. So there's a real competitiveness there. So there has to be some privacy. And people get up in arms because they want privacy. But that's the only way to maneuver in a competitive environment, is to initially have confidence in them, that they will maneuver under the radar and be able to bring in the embryairs.
Thank you.
And that, did a signal come up?
We'll move on to-
I couldn't see because of the light. I'm sorry. Light got me.
It's okay. Brian, your thoughts on the EDC and economic development agencies?
Sure. In theory, I don't have a problem with any of them. However, my concern is, in practice, not in theory, as a fiscal conservative, when I look at business tax incentives, I have to look at the overall benefit to the locality. And what I feel warm and fuzzy about, or certainly warmer and fuzzier about than anything else, is if we're going to offer a business, some form of tax incentive to get them to stay here or to get them to come here, it should only come out of tax revenue in the future that we otherwise would not have realized. So if we're bringing a company in here, I don't necessarily have an issue crediting them from the future taxes that we wouldn't have otherwise received anyway. However, in terms of simply offering handouts for milestones, such as getting a certificate of occupancy, that I don't feel warm and fuzzy about, and that's something I would oppose. But my understanding is the EDC, having spoken with them, does operate to a large degree in a way that I'm comfortable with, by offering those business tax incentives on the back end from new tax revenues.
Chuck, you're next on economic development.
Okay. I would tell you that the EDC has, you know, saved Brevard County from absolute collapse. Because when the economy went bad, when the space shuttle got parked, it was critical that we recapture jobs, that we had a skilled workforce, and we needed to bring those skill, you know, people into manufacturing with those skills, and they've done a great job. The tax abatement program is approved by the citizens of Brevard County. So they're following a program that actually only gives a benefit if they expend money to create new tax base and if they create those jobs. If they don't do either of those two, then they don't get the abatement. So I think the program has worked out exceptionally well. Our staff on the EDC is highly respected throughout the state, and that's been seen through the amount of economic development dollars we've gotten from the state of Florida in conjunction with what we've done. So I think they've done a great job.
Thank you. The county commission this year approved using $5 million from hotel bed taxes paid by tourists to install AstroTurf at the Viera Regional Park. Critics say that money should have gone to the Indian River Lagoon. Do you support the commission's decision in approving this project and explain why or why not? Jack, you're going first.
Should have went to infrastructure surrounding the lagoon. We were just talking about not having money to be able to work on our infrastructure. So, you know, they're involved with the tourism department. Tourism department brings people into Brevard County. It doesn't make sense to bring people and to grow if you don't have infrastructure to maintain the growth. So that's where, that's where smart growth or sustainable growth comes in. But that's my feeling on it exactly. I could use more time talking, but I'm not going to.
Well, thank you. You're very kind. Brian, your thoughts on AstroTurf?
I think it was an absolute waste. I don't like that that was done. The fact that we're bonding out certain things yet paying $5 million for AstroTurf is mind-boggling to me. We were earlier talking about a $12 million, or an up to $12 million deficit or loss with the homestead initiative potentially going through. There's almost half of that, that entire amount. So no, I'm completely against that.
Thank you. Chuck?
Well, I think the decision was actually a good one. The fact that those fields were originally designed for one sport, and there are now three on there, just our local kids are on a field that's dangerous. So even if it were, if we had known there were going to be that many kids on those fields, we probably would have put in AstroTurf when they were first built. I think what's lost in this is that this money is specifically tied to tourism. And you can't just shift it around, use it anywhere you want to, for any purpose you want to. And that's by state statute. So I think their decision to improve those fields benefits our kids directly, and it also puts heads in beds. And I think that's important as well. So if you support tourism, it's a good project.
Thank you. Victoria?
I mean, it did go over something.
No, I'm sorry. Only rebuttals if he's bringing up something you specifically said, or, and let's stick to if they bring up another opponent.
Can I have my 30 seconds I didn't use last time?
I'm sorry. You have your closing statement, so we have plenty of time.
A little levity, that's all it's trying.
Well, Victoria, I believe you're next.
Okay. I think that the decision was a good decision. And from what Mr. Nelson said, that money can only be used for tourist development. And so the money that we generate in tourist tax, it does a lot. 10.8 million goes towards the Save the Lagoon project. 10.8 goes to Brevard County Public Schools infrastructure. 3.1 million goes to fuel tax for road improvements. And 13.6 million goes towards the tourist development. So I think that they did the right thing, especially if, you know, they couldn't shift the money around.
Thank you. Chuck and Victoria brought up the fact that the tourism development tax dollars are tied to certain projects. However, the law has been changed in the last legislative session.
Thank you.
And counties and municipalities can now use tourism tax dollars for the lagoon, for sewer and road infrastructure.
Exactly.
So my next question is, should the county revisit how it's spending its tourism tax dollars and perhaps spend it on roads, infrastructure, and sewer and the lagoon? The first one to go is Brian.
Yes. I'll save you guys some time.
And please explain, explain why.
Yes. No, I think the last example of $5 million, I'm sorry, $5 million going to AstroTurf, that's an excellent reason why it ought to be revisited. To me, we have so much excessive spending and so much waste, it needs to be revisited. We can keep taxes low, or at least as low as possible, by cutting expenditures. In terms of reshifting it, if we have to spend the money because it's given to us for some particular purpose, I think it should always be revisited to see if what we're doing is the best use of taxpayer funds. Anytime you're just going with status quo without questioning it, you're not doing the service that you owe the constituents within the district.
Thank you. Chuck?
Well, I think that the, you know, the tourism tax, now that it can be used for roads and other purposes, I think there's a danger in that. Because we have multiple funding sources, and it's not supporting the original industry that it was intended to. And I think that it would be easy for county commissioners to begin to siphon off those dollars, and the tourism industry will be hurt by that. And they have been, and certainly in District Two, a major benefit for us during the economic downturn. While they suffered as well, it still helped us. It saved us a lot of lost revenue. So I think it's short-sighted to begin to siphon off money to fund these other needs. And I think we need to stay with what we've got and look at those other funding sources and make sure we're spending those wisely.
Thank you. Victoria, should the county revisit how it's spending its tourism tax dollars?
I think what they're doing right now is a wonderful job. I mean, in certain cases, on a case-by-case scenario, yes. However, I just still stand by my last statement.
Jack?
You were kind enough to, the extra time I wanted was to make the statement that that law had changed. So thank you for doing that for me.
You're welcome.
And making that point. And yet, we've right back to saying, no, it's got to stay with tourism. Well, there's a reason for that. If you want the answer to that reason why that money needs to stay in tourism, go to our finance on the supervisor of elections and look at where our money funding's coming from. And you can tell by Mr. Chuck Nelson's income where that's coming from, which are a lot of hoteliers and a lot of the tourism industry, that's, which is hoteliers. So we've got to start looking at our infrastructure, the nuts and bolts, and we have to make sustainable, sustainable decisions, decisions that are going to last in this county.
Thank you.
Excuse me. It's my turn. Since he mentioned my name very specifically.
I don't want to say it wasn't.
30 seconds.
You're going to change the log in?
You know, first of all, it seems to me that at least two members of this board have forgotten who exists in their, as their constituents. I'm not going to apologize that I've been supportive of the tourism industry, just like I've been supportive of the aviation industry, the space industry, and all of those that are creating a stronger tax base for us. So, you know, I've been here for 30 years, almost, so I would expect I've met some of those folks, and I think that they've enjoyed the benefits of-
Thank you. 30 seconds. Thank you. So let's move on to the next question. The county recently decided to phase out its funding for nonprofits and charities. So my question is, should the county revisit that decision in terms of funding charities and nonprofits that help the homeless, among other causes? Chuck, you're going first.
I think they should. I think it's a mistake to, not to look at what the community needs are. For instance, Meals on Wheels is the classic example. It brings back hundreds of thousands of dollars to this community to feed seniors. That in itself would be great. But if we can keep a senior out of nursing care or a nursing home, it's going to save us $30,000 a year. And that comes out of Medicaid, which we pay off the top before we do anything else. It's an unfunded mandate. The state sends us a bill, and we pay it. So certainly, I think we need to look at those programs where there are benefits. Some of the juvenile programs. For instance, if you can keep a child out of incarceration, that's almost $30,000. So I think there are benefits to these programs. It's not charity. They have to meet goals. They are, there's oversight. So I think they're beneficial.
Thank you. Victoria?
I have to agree with him. I do think that they need to revisit their decision. And one in particular, the Community Action Agency, they cut funding from that program, and that program helps out a lot of Brevardians that are in need, with utility costs, prescription costs, and rental assistance as well. And I think that we need to always give our neighbors a helping hand and a hand up instead of just saying, you know, forget them. Because you never know when you're going to be that person in need. So I really do think they need to revisit that decision.
Jack, should the county revisit its decision to phase out?
Yeah. I don't think it needs to be approached as all and all. Get rid, I think that we, each nonprofit needs to be looked at individually. And if it brings back some value to our community, like Meals on Wheels, then I would say that's, that's a nonprofit that needs to be considered. But each one has to be scrutinized and looked at individually. And there has to be some proof as to what value they are to Brevard County and our community, something given back.
Brian?
My view with it is a little bit different. It's not totally dissimilar. But the way that I look at it is, if we're buying a good or a service that we'd otherwise buy, or something that would benefit the county as a whole, then that's something that's potentially a good decision. However, if it's something where we're, on the other hand, giving money away as a handout to a charity, I don't know that it's the position of the government to essentially confiscate money by taxing us, to turn around and to choose which charities and which amounts to give those charities. I've donated to charity to multiple charities this year. I've donated to charity last year and every year that I can recall that I've been an adult. I've donated money. I've donated time. But I believe that it's my decision who I donate to and how much I donate. But as I said, if we're buying a good or buying a service, I don't have an issue with that.
Thank you. Still on a similar topic, do you support county investment in the arts and culture to develop Brevard as a cultural destination? Victoria, you're going first.
Yes, I do support that. And I think that we need to invest in the kids and STEM programs and just invest them and invest in them, excuse me, I'm getting tongue-twisted. I invest in them and just basically let them know that they're our future. And I just don't see any issues with that.
Thank you. Jack?
Our culture is part of it. Music, culture is a big part of how we define our community. And there's a big value in that. And this is where we need to, I believe we need to consider that. At the end of the day, that's more up to the people. The people don't see value in culture and that. I see it through a lens, but, a certain lens, but that's because I'm in the music, I was in the music business. So I saw firsthand what it could do to a community. I went out and did a show in Collingwood, Canada. 120,000 people in a little ski town because they appreciated culture and music. And it can really, from a financial standpoint, really do a good job in a community, so.
Brian?
It's a tough question. And the issue is, if we have the money, it's not necessarily that tough. But we don't have the money the way that things are being allocated at this point. I think that what we choose to spend and the extent to which we choose to invest in anything that's art or culture-related has to depend on our overall financial circumstance. I'll tell you, my wife and I, this is not the first year that we've had season tickets to BSO. I'm sure we'll renew next year. Whether it's the same cost or twice the cost, we're going to continue to go. I don't know, in all honesty, though, that that's something that benefits the vast majority of the residents here. And if there does have to be a cut, it's unfortunate. I know that it's going to drive my ticket prices up, but it's not fair that I subsidize, or other people subsidize, my enjoyment of a particular show. So it's something where it's going to depend on our overall financial picture.
Thank you. Chuck?
You know, Winston Churchill said, if we are going to get rid of the arts during the middle of World War II, what are we fighting for? And I think it's important to understand that the arts create tourism, the arts create the attraction of major employers to our community. If you look at the North Grumman's, the Lockheed Martins, they want to come to an area where their employees can enjoy living. Because it's not all about just working. It's about, you're living in a community. If you look at Huntsville, Alabama, they are one of the top in the southeast arts communities. And the reason is, they've got major businesses there. And so I think it's important, if we're going to compete with other parts of the state and in the southeast, I think you've got to have arts programs that work for the community, that attract people to our community.
Thank you. And we have five minutes left, so that's enough time for your closing statements, time to make a good case for voters. And we're actually going to do, we're going to go to reverse. So we're going to start with Chuck. You're going first. One minute to do your closing statement.
Well, what I think I bring to this table is the experience that is necessary going forward. Because I do believe the homestead exemption's going to pass, and it's going to be just as it was in 2008, when the last homestead exemption passed. What I hear is this lack of understanding. It's not 7 to 12 million dollars that we're going to lose. 7 million is the general fund loss. The other 12 are in multiple other sources. It'll be $12 million. And when we talk about where we're going to go in the future, you've got to balance it. We had a gentle landing, if you will, when we had to make- we had to make all of our cuts, and it wasn't easy. Uh, sometimes I think I get criticized because I didn't enjoy making those 500 cuts. So I think the, you know, the, the issue for me is, and the reason I got into this race was because I think this is a great community, and I think it can and will continue to be great. We just need to make sure that we, we manage our government in a way that respects its citizens and it listens to its citizens.
Thank you. Brian, your closing statement?
Thank you. Uh, just to mention something that, that Chuck mentioned a moment ago, in terms of experience, I think experience has a value if you accomplish things that are substantial during that time in office, if you fulfill your campaign promises. And I recall from years back, hearing about the lagoon being a priority and about roads being a priority. However, we have the same issues now. To leave after two terms, an issue that was one of your campaign issues worse than you found it, any way you want to excuse it, blaming an eight-year econo- economic downturn, which I don't know really lasted a full eight years, the full two terms, that's offering excuses instead of solutions. I'm an attorney. That's what I do by day. I mediate cases as well. I'm used to bringing folks together that have intractable views and opposite views. I'm going to bring those skills to bear on the county commission and work to build consensus and work to bridge, uh, to build bridges with the folks in the different districts so that we can get what we need in this district funded appropriately while eliminating and lowering the expenses that are truly unnecessary.
Thank you. Jack?
Excuse me, do I get 30 seconds?
I'm sorry. No rebuttals in the opening or closing. We got to follow the same rules here. I apologize.
So you got a second free shot?
Well, he had your free shot because he went first in the opening, so, uh, Jack, we're gonna, we're gonna do your, your closing statement.
You threw me off now, man. I'll tell you what. I, uh, listen, at the end of the day, the difference between running a business and running a county or being part of the way the county is run and making decisions on how the county's run is to take into consideration quality of life. And that brings us right back to sustainable decisions. Okay? Those decisions sometimes aren't just about the environment. They might be about, um, in the case of, uh, wanting to move a, close a park down or, or wanting to take away, uh, quality of life in an area. And those things need to be considered. Yes, there's dollars involved, but sometimes, uh, the county needs to consider quality of life in their decision-making. As a county commissioner, I will do everything I can to save every dollar for the citizen, but I'm also going to try, uh, try to apply quality of life decisions to our county so we can enjoy this county. Thank you.
Thank you. Victoria, one minute.
So if I didn't learn anything, was to bring a bottle of water and bring a Kevlar. So, all right. So, uh, from day one of, uh, entering this race, I always said I was running for all of the residents of, uh, District Two and not just certain ones, and I stand by that to this day. I may not say the fanciest of words, uh, but I will be a voice for the underrepresented who are not a part of special interest groups and who do not have money to buy influence. Um, I'm running for the average, uh, person, construction workers, uh, teachers, firefighters, janitors, that struggling family, uh, who's trying to decide what bills to pay, uh, this pay cycle. And so, only thing I'm going to say is I'm going to allow the voters of District Two determ- to determine, uh, if I'm going to be their next county commission. I'm not a career politician. I'm just a veteran who served her country, our country, honorably, and just wants to serve again. And I just want to say thank you for hosting this.
Thank you.
Can I say thank you to Ms. Mitchener for her service to our country?
And thank you all for being here tonight. Um, that's a wrap up for our County Commission District Two Forum. Stay tuned. At 8:00 PM, we're going to be hosting the candidates running for District Four on the county commission, covering central Brevard area such as Brevard, Indian Harbor Beach, and parts of Melbourne and Rockledge. And also tomorrow at 7:00 and 8:00 PM, we will be hosting candidates running for Florida House Districts 51 and 52. Reminder that the primary is on August 28th. Thank you for watching.